Good evening. It is Monday, February 2nd, and I call this regular City Council meeting to order. I want to thank everyone for joining us this evening. Would you please join me in the flag salute? And Councilmember Cedar, will you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the record, all council is here with the exception of seat number five, which we will be filling later this evening. For staff, we have interim Finance Director Robek, Public Works Director Madden, Assistant Police Chief Champagne, and Planning Manager Stahlnecker. Next item on the agenda is citizen participation. The purpose of public comment period at this meeting is for those wishing to address the council on any matter. It is not intended for debate and discussion with the public. Please state your name and city for the record. Lastly, we kindly remind you to limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have the signup sheet? Thank you. The first public commenter this evening is Chad Atwater.
Hello, my name is Chad Atwater. I live in Milton. I've been here since 1976. So there's a few people that I didn't see in the city that I was going to send this email. I was curious if everybody got that email. And I tried to send one to Chief Hernandez. He said to reach out to the Assistant Chief, but there was no email for him, and that email incidentally bounced back. So I know there's, I don't know if the staff or the Planning Manager or the Finance Director or anybody else needs that email. And I just, I brought in some maps and some copies of it in case anybody wanted to see it.
Yeah, you can bring them up.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Philip Jenkins.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and esteemed members of the City Council. The reason I'm here, I think that you all received my email, is about pigeons and the 200 pigeons that the lady across the street from me has, the flock that she's cultivated. My wife and I, Laura, are building a new house at 414 Comet Street, and we're going to build two others adjacent to that. And over the course of about 20 years, because we built three other houses there, I've watched her flock grow from about 12 birds up to about 200 now. And I have real concern that her, that the flock is going to intimidate potential buyers of the new home. Sometimes I see them on our roof, the full flock. She feeds them. But when you feed birds, you're not only feeding the birds, you're feeding rats and mice. And I can see the trail as it goes through our neighborhood, I mean through our lots. And so I had approached Josephine because we have a really good relationship other than the birds. And I actually approached her husband and talked to him about it. And he talked to her and said, you know, he said he was going to ask her about my concerns. So they stopped feeding the pigeons for a while, but then they continued to feed the pigeons. So when you pull up and there are 200 pigeons and they all take off at the same time, it's really intimidating. And so what I would desire, the desired action I would like would be to apply an applicable city code to stop feeding this flock of birds, the mice and the rats. If there is not a city code or law, then to make one to address our problem, to consider the health issues with the bird flu, sanitary issues, getting bird droppings on you, on your skin, on your cars, on the street that your shoes are going to be walking on and taken into the house, just the unsightly flock of birds and what they leave on the ground. And I would like for her to not feed, I would like to see a no-bird-feeding policy similar to what they have at parks and other public places. And she doesn't feed her birds on her property. It's usually on, for years it was on our property that was vacant at 412 and 416 Comet Street. But since we started, and I asked her not to do that, then she's started feeding on the property that's next to her. She doesn't feed the birds at her actual lot. So those are my main concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Most welcome, sir.
The next speaker tonight is Jaclyn Whalen.
Jaclyn Whalen, Milton, Washington. Thank you for the opportunity to address staff, council, and esteemed guests. The reason for my coming to the podium, I've sent a more detailed email to council and staff to give you a visual experience of what it is like when fiber optic cable is installed on the property or the right-of-way in front of your property. I understand you're not in charge of, quote, "the project." But the reason you may value those pictures and some of my comments has to do with the fact that there are ramifications to those documents that you empower the executive branch of the government to implement. I have to thank city staff for their responsiveness as I announced concerns regarding what amounts to trespass on my property, damaging my property, and leaving behind an unsafe condition in front of my property. And I'm not alone. As I speak to people, I hear of far worse things, so I'm thankful for that. I wasn't in that category. But it's distressing to know the amount of time this has taken city staff. I know I wasn't the only one to call, and I know staff invested quality time to address my concerns. That's a burden on the city. So I'm asking you as legislators, when future agreements come before you, you ask questions like, what's the reputation of this contractor? What are, what are the ways the city is protected when they damage city infrastructure? What are the things that happen when they trespass on private property? You can see from the pictures, they had no problem. They had no problem making use of private property to facilitate the installation of the conduit. They left a mess, as I mentioned. They're ill-equipped. It's stunning to me to know that these people must have been installing thousands of miles of conduit and not have the tools they need to do the job properly. So the ask of you is, think about catch-as-catch-can. That phrase that just means hit or miss using any available method. There'll be another contractor who goes by that methodology and asking staff to do their best to find out in advance what other cities' experience is and getting a better agreement written to protect us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whalen. That was everyone that signed up on the list. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the council this evening? All right, seeing none. We shall move on to additions and deletions. Are there any requested additions or deletions to the agenda this evening? Seeing none, we will go on to the consent agenda. Does anyone want to pull an item off the consent agenda for discussion? Seeing none. May I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Yes, Councilmember Mounds.
I move that we accept the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Mounds and seconded by Councilmember Whalen to pass the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes six-zero. On to the regular agenda, item 6A, which is on page 21 of your packet. And Assistant Chief Champagne will be, will be telling us. Oh, Michelle. Whomever, whichever of you would like to start. Sorry, Assistant Chief, your name was first.
This is for the purchase of the three police vehicles following the two-year amortization schedule that we have in place. There's an additional third vehicle that we're asking to be approved for the traffic officer position, which was approved last year? Last year? For the 2026 budget. And the total with the upfitting comes to $240,000 is estimated because there's labor in there. I can answer any questions about that, but those are the three vehicles.
Any questions for Assistant Chief? Yes, Councilmember Turnus.
I just...
I'm sorry, just a point of order. I think we need a motion to open the floor for discussion.
That is true. Would someone like to make a motion?
I motion to open the floor for discussion.
No. The motion in your packet?
Oh.
On page 21.
I move to, oh, I'm not moving for that, sorry. I just wanted to open it up for discussion.
Okay, we need a motion first.
Okay.
If you don't want to make the motion, someone else can.
Okay.
Anyone else like to make the motion? Yes.
I move to approve the purchase of three police vehicles, not to exceed $240,000, and authorize the mayor to sign all documents necessary to execute three purchases.
Any second.
I'll second it.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember Turnus.
Well, first of all, I was wondering why we were looking at a dealership in Pasco, for one. I actually reached out, I know somebody that works down at the Ford dealership down here in Milton, and got a quote as well. And so I was just wondering why it is that we are going to Pasco to purchase our vehicles.
So what we're using is the state bid website, and that normally if we do the RFP, we go to three different dealers or more. That with the state bid, they find the, they're basically doing the RFP for us. They're getting the prices. And these vehicles, they have police equipment already in them. So a dealership, if you just got a straight quote for just a normal vehicle, that's not what these are. They have additional electronics, spotlights, things like that, that are coming already equipped. And then after we get those vehicles, we outfit them more.
I would just ask, because I did address those issues when I was submitting to get a quote from them, and they did offer estimates that do have the spotlights and the other equipment on it. And so I was just wanting to just submit them, just for something to weigh it against, the cost versus cost, to just run, you know, five miles down the hill, to be doing community with our community partners here in the local area. I mean, as a small business owner, as a business owner, I just feel like it's important to create these connections and actually give our business to local people, is my thought. So I don't know who I submit these to. The, I'm,
I might be able to add on to that. As part of our purchasing policy in our annual audit, the state, the state bid contract automatically basically fulfills all audit requirements and purchasing requirements. So by purchasing off the state contract, we know that if those purchases are audited, that they'll check out, they'll pass the audit on every level because this contract has gone through all of the state requirements as well. So it ensures that we're, that we're following kind of purchasing guidelines by purchasing off the state contract.
Okay. So it's my understanding that because the state purchases all of their vehicles through this particular dealership, that that's why we're following suit?
Yes, and it's, the state actually goes through a contracting and bidding process with, with different dealers. I believe for different vehicles as well. They're like, some of our public works vehicles, if we were to buy them off the state contract, wouldn't necessarily come from this dealer. Just these, these particular police vehicles are coming from this dealer as part of the state contract, which has kind of gone through all of the, all of the state requirements. So it's an added level of protection that we're, we're following all those requirements.
And so is this a non-negotiable for them to even look at another resource?
No, it's, it's, it's not. We, as Chief, Assistant Chief Champagne alluded to, we, we could, we could get three bids and fulfill those requirements as well.
I would just like to submit this bid for, at least to have you look over and, yeah.
Councilmember Mounds?
Just a...
Councilmember Whalen?
Sure. No, go ahead, but please speak directly into the microphone. It makes it so much easier for somebody that's hearing it.
Can you hear me okay?
To hear it.
Okay.
Going to say to anybody else at the microphone. I don't want to be, I don't want to be left out.
Thank you, Bob.
So, point of clarification, just because I'm gaining familiarity...
Excuse me. Let's do a point of order here. Generally, once somebody says they're voting for it, and then you second it, then that person speaks first, and then the next person speaks, and then it goes out to others. It's really hard because you're new. But it's just, we just want to make sure that we do it the same way every time. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Respectfully.
And I apologize. Let's, let's, let's step back and do it that way. Councilmember Roberts, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, I'll speak to my motion. I know that this is necessary for having the new officer onboard. I did have a question, however, regarding the additional amount, the estimate of $20,000 per vehicle for the additional fitting. Do we have any kind of itemization to indicate what that additional $20,000 is towards very specifically?
I don't have it. Our fleet manager could certainly get that, but there, every vehicle is different. One of these vehicles is a traffic car, so it'll have different equipment. One is an admin car, and then another one is a standard patrol car, which has the most equipment in it. He could provide a list like that, but it's, it's something we could get if that's what you wanted, yes. We can get that from the...
Yeah, if you could, yeah, that'd be good. I yield back.
Okay. Councilmember Hall, would you like to speak to your second?
So that includes the lights, that includes all of the inside interior, where you have to take out the backseat, put in the new seat, all the computer, all the lights, that's everything.
Yes.
Seeing it happen, I mean, they come in bare bones. And then you also pull out those backseats and you keep them. And then when we go to use it for another department or it gets sold, then those get put back in, correct?
Yes, it's, 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 there's a lot that goes on when it goes to the builder. Like you said, they pull out the seats, but they're doing electronics, they're putting in all kinds of different, all kinds of different pieces of equipment. But we could, we could get a list for each vehicle. I wouldn't have that right now, but we could.
Okay.
And then I have one more question. So are you going to phase out three vehicles? Or are you going to have to keep one because you have a new police starting? How is that going to work?
So we're going to phase out the Charger. It's no longer got any police use out of it. We're not going to get any more out of it.
Yeah.
The truck will probably use for operations that are not patrol.
Okay.
And then there is no third one because the third one's the traffic car that's being an addition.
That was my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Whalen?
Thank you very much, and thank you for your presentation. Generally, every police department who purchases cars tries to have kind of a standard cab. I don't mean by model, but equipment in them. These don't all come with that equipment, so it's up to us to signify what it is we want added to the vehicle to make it standard, I use that word, closest standard, so that everybody in the department knows where everything is in that vehicle. It's consistent, it's continue, consistent equipment that everybody could utilize rather readily. And we have to outfit it that way.
Yes, like one, the patrol car will be just like every other patrol car, exactly. The traffic car will be different because it only has a spotlight on one side. It is a traffic car. He'll have to have the radar put in, so that's going to have a cost. And then the admin car is a lot cheaper because it doesn't have all the same equipment as a standard patrol car. It just has lights and a radio. It doesn't have a cage, which is expensive. So all three of these cars have a different build because they all serve a different purpose.
But it is standard, closest standard or familiarization of what people in the department are used to and expect.
Yes.
That's how they come to us. That's how they're, will come to us, but we modify it as consistent with the rest of, with the rest of the equipment in the police department, as close as we can. Yes, they're specialized, and that's to be known, but that's something every department has to do when you purchase new vehicles.
Right, yes.
Councilmember Mounds?
So what impact would it be to the city to go ahead and go out for bid on your own versus piggybacking on a state bid contract? Is that one of the considerations? Do we have a contracting officer in the corps? And do we have the capability of purchasing these vehicles ourselves and managing the contract?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be the, that RFP process we're talking about, where we go out and get the different bids. And our fleet manager already looks at these prices, and I'm looking at this one that was handed to me today. And that price is very similar to what we have on here. But when he goes through the state bid, like she was saying, there's a lot more that goes into that because everything is vetted that way. And there was even a time where we bought a car that wasn't new, and then it, we had, it had been all kinds of, it had been in an accident, nobody knew. So we tried to go through trusted, verified sources, and we know with the state bid, that that RFP process, we don't have to go through that because they're already doing that for us. So that's why we've been using them.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Cedar?
Yeah, thanks. Were you the one that talked to the dealer and got these, or is this from a different person? Looks like there's a sergeant that was involved.
Yeah, it's our fleet manager, Sergeant Zimmer.
Why does the email have a link to the utility hybrid? In the email saying, here's some specs of these vehicles, but then the quotes are all for what looks like a 3-liter V6 non-hybrid motor, or maybe a 3.3?
Yeah, it's not a hybrid. Which page are you looking at?
Sure, I'm looking at page 30 of 33 in the packet. It says, here is a website that has a little info on the vehicles, and it links to a description of Ford's three different models, one of which is the hybrid utility.
That was just an email to me. He was trying to show me pictures. This actually has nothing to do with the quotes. We, I asked him for pictures for this meeting today, and he was trying to link that to show basically pictures because they look the same. But the quotes are not hybrids.
Why not?
Because the hybrids, we actually explored a bunch of different cars, the Durango, the Blazer. And they have a lot of issues. And with the hybrids, he was talking about, there was transmission issues, like Tacoma had them, I think maybe New York. But there was a lot of issues with the transmissions. And when you go to like Electric, which was another thing we were looking at, they were talking about, you need a separate battery. There's power issues because of all the power that's drawn for the equipment. So it is something that, we were looking at different models, and he was like, it's just not there yet as far as like the reliability, where we know that the gas models and the pursuit-rated gas models, they're reliable. So we just didn't feel comfortable getting into those because of the repairs.
Who was it that that opinion was coming from?
What's that?
Where'd that opinion come from?
That was me discussing it with the fleet manager.
Where did the opinion on reliability come from? Just you and the fleet manager?
Yes.
Okay. I've been asking about hybrid vehicles for five years now. I've driven a hybrid for about five years as well, and I know they've been on the road for a long time. Ford's been making them for a long time. The annual savings is approximately $17,000, assuming you have normal usage and you're filling up regularly because you have a much better fuel economy. I just don't understand why we have this discussion every year, and yet I appreciate, you know, you, Assistant Chief Champagne. I would be saying the same thing to Chief Fernandez if you were sitting there. No one is going out and getting us actual data here, and I don't understand why not when we have this discussion every year about where it comes from. Like, I appreciate your opinions about hybrids, but I don't think that's true based on my own personal experience.
Well, I, I will tell you, I didn't look into it in depth. No, I did not, because I trust him. He knows way more cars than I do. But for, even for this meeting, I was looking it up. And the hybrids had transmission issues, just as like, just 2024 and 23. Driveshaft bolt, the bolts were recalled and caused issues on these cars. I got 15,000 miles. And this is the stuff I found from online. So there were, there were issues. I knew that Tacoma had had these issues in the past, I don't know for what year. And we do discuss these, like even the admin car, we talked about even Electric. And he was looking at the Ford Lightning, but then the Lightning got discontinued. So we're having these discussions, but I, I can't speak a lot on car mechanics because I'm not really the car guy. But I, I can't speak a lot on car mechanics, because I'm not really the car guy. But he was explaining them to me.
Yeah, I mean, I turn a lot of wrenches on cars. I probably don't look like it, but I've worked on cars my whole life. And, you know, that conflicts with my understanding of cars. It also conflicts with my understanding of Ford reliability in general. I also don't appreciate that just, this refers to other vehicles considered in the selection process, but due to Milton's terrain, power outputs from emergency equipment and above-mentioned considerations, the specific vehicle was selected. What about Milton's terrain dictated these choices?
That's not something that I discussed with him, so.
How about the power outputs from emergency equipment? Was there some specific consideration there?
For the emergency equipment, he did tell me there was issues when he talked to the outfitter that we were using up in Issaquah, our North Bend area, that there was a separate battery, and that there was issues with the power draw. And that there was another issue with the vehicle, when it stops and takes off, the acceleration, there's some kind of delay there that had caused an accident. This is a story that he was telling me about, where these were being used, and there was a delay. So again, this is the opinion of the fleet manager, but.
And I appreciate that. Thanks for answering my questions. I won't support this until I can speak to someone, either the fleet manager who has actual data, or someone else who can justify not moving to a hybrid platform.
I have one more.
Yes, Councilmember Hall.
Do you know if the batteries have improved enough to support the leased vehicles? Because I did speak to somebody that was or is a head of Ford and also supplies all the fleets for the state of Washington. And this was a couple of years ago. And he was saying that it just wasn't there yet. Do you know if that's still true? I'd like an update on that as well. It's kind of like what you said.
I mean, I'm sorry to interrupt, if I may. I would just note that the link provided, Ford specifically addresses that issue. So, you know, I'm just looking at Ford's data. I know that's a marketing ploy, but they specifically have batteries set up for that. So I defer to you, Assistant Chief.
And that's why I asked the question.
And I don't know the specifics on the battery. What I've expressed to you guys is the discussion I have with the fleet manager. I don't know exactly, so.
Any further discussion or questions? This is a action item. Are there any comments from the public? Seeing none, there is a motion on the table to approve the purchase of three police vehicles, not to exceed $240,000, and authorize the mayor to sign all documents necessary to execute these purchases. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
No. He can't nay, because he said yes.
When you did the opening.
But I just moved it.
Okay, let's, let's, let's do a recorded vote. Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Cedar.
No.
Councilmember Mounds.
No.
Councilmember Turnus.
No.
Councilmember Roberts.
Nay.
Okay.
As a, as a point of order, if you bring a motion forward to pass, you're obligated to vote aye on such a motion, under Robert's rules of order. Understanding that, I believe the vote would be three to three, in which case it wouldn't pass anyway.
Okay. Councilmember Wayland.
I'm sorry.
It's probably worth discussing the point of order.
Yeah, I just had a discussion regarding that. I was under the impression, even if you moved the motion, you could still vote how you wanted to vote.
The second, the mover of the motion, if it's not amended in some way, is obligated to vote aye.
Aye. Understood. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Wayland.
I'm a little confused, because there's things about it we don't understand, and we voiced them today. I think we should just delay this until those questions that were asked have answers, and not just move away from approving this. The approval process should be with all the questions that were asked and the answers, so that we can intelligently continue. Otherwise, this thing is going to almost disappear if we don't have adequate information to understand it completely. That's what we're looking for. I believe in what I'm hearing. And I've bought enough police cars over my term as councilman, that each one has a little bit difference, each one has a little bit more. Tweaking that has to be done and so forth. But I would just like to see this deferred for another time, and not a no to purchasing this, but defer it for an appropriate time.
I believe we can, we can bring this back.
Which may be the end of this month.
Okay. I do believe we can bring this back with some additional information, and perhaps we can talk about it in our upcoming council workshops.
If that's the clarity that's needed, that's fine. I just wanted to state it.
If I may?
Of course.
The motion has failed at this point. So it can come back anytime, just as any normal council agenda item can. But the motion has failed.
Yes, it has.
Yes.
Okay. All right. The next item on the agenda is item 6B on page 31. Appointment to the Park Board. Daniel Hodson has applied for one of the vacant positions on the Park Board. Mr. Hodson has lived in Milton for eight years, and is looking to lend his help to the board. I recommend appointing Daniel Hodson to the Park Board. Is there anyone here that would like to make a motion? Councilmember Cedar.
I move to approve the mayor's appointment of Daniel Hodson to the Park Board for a term to expire December 31 of 2026.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Cedar and seconded by Councilmember Roberts to, is there any discussion? I'm sorry, let's start there.
I don't have any specific discussion. I appreciate this coming forward. I don't know, Mr., I don't know Daniel personally, but my understanding is that he wants to be on the Park Board, and I've heard good things.
Daniel, are you here? Yes. Why don't you come up and introduce yourself?
There we go.
Hi, I'm Daniel Hodson, and I applied for the Park Board. And I have a long safety career in bowling, so I have a lot of that to add to the Park Board.
Yes, Councilmember Turnus.
Well, is this open for discussion, for questions or anything? I mean, not for him in particular, no?
Is that right?
No.
Okay.
No.
No. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Councilmember Roberts, would you like to speak to your second?
No.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Cedar and seconded by Councilmember Roberts to approve the mayor's appointment of Daniel Hodson to the Park.
I believe now would be appropriate time for a discussion on the motion, if anyone else has something to say.
I'm doing great today.
We got you frazzled early. It's all right.
All right, yeah, any discussion on the motion? Yes, Councilmember Turnus.
I was just curious how this comes about to be, was there an ad put out for park position, opening, park board position? Or how was this even addressed?
Yes, they are advertised on the website. There are currently two positions open on the Park Board.
Okay.
And Mr. Hodson had, came to the last Parks Board meeting. And having gone through one of those, he continued to wish to be on the board. So he's here today.
And so there were no other candidates? Just him?
No, and there's still one opening.
Oh, okay. All right, great. Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, should you, should you appoint him? There will be additional openings, so anyone else that's interested, please apply.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you for an opportunity just to speak briefly about this. I know Daniel. I've known Daniel for quite a while. He's a very precise individual, very straightforward, very informed, very studious individual. So I think he'd be a great advantage for the Park Board as a nominee for the open position.
Thank you, Bob. Any further comments? All right. Okay, so it's been moved by Councilmember Cedar and seconded by Councilmember Roberts to approve the mayor's appointment of Daniel Hodson to the Parks Board for a term to expire December 31, 2026. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. All right. The next item on the agenda is interviews and appointment to Council Position 5. It's on page 33. Council Position 5 is vacant as of December 31, 2025, due to the person elected moving before filling it. Council has the option of appointing an eligible citizen to the position, or failing to do so within 90 days of the vacation, Pierce County may make the appointment. Council opted to open the position up to the citizens for an application slash interview process. The application period ended 9:00 a.m. on Tuesday, January 27, 2026. There are six eligible applicants. The applicants are Barbara Buck, Olav Gertz, Adam Ibanez, John Poor, Rachel Shin, and Bruce Turnus. The applicants are scheduled for interview during this meeting of the City Council. Based on those interviews, council may adjourn to an executive session to discuss, and then come back into regular session and make a motion to appoint the candidate. We will draw names to see who is first. When all names are drawn, the clerk will escort all applicants to the room across the hall. Once the first interview is concluded, clerk will go get the next applicant, and so on, until all interviews are complete. Council will then retire to executive session to discuss the applicants, and will come back into regular session to make their nominations. There is no second needed. A round robin vote will be done for each nomination, and the candidate with the majority of votes will receive the appointment. The council member will be sworn in before the council reports, and will take the seat at the dais, so. So I will draw the first name, and if your name is drawn, you will be staying. Bruce Turnus. So everyone else, please follow the clerk. Okay. The council members created their questions beforehand, and you have the question sheet in front of you. And we're going to go in seat order. So we'll start with Councilmember Roberts.
Thank you, sir. Quick question, very simple. Why do you want to be on City Council?
Just been in the city most of my life, and was, been very involved in a lot of different activities through the years. I was a teen late night down in Puyallup. Probably did six or seven years down there, and was with a church up in Federal Way on 356, and seen some of those go from elementary school to, you know, the youth group. Seen some, actually a couple get married. That, so, just longevity, and just felt like, you know, having that stability for those kids was just such an important virtue for them. And just, I mean, because, I don't know, youth pastors don't last that long, but, you know, and I used to, as a young, young boy here in town, always wanted that drumming. Every Tuesday night, when we used to have the old wind-up sirens on the poles here, and that was drill night. You know, you knew those guys were all meeting down at the firehouse and training. And it took me a long time. But I finally got the courage to come down and put in almost 10 years here with Milton Fire as well, and miss that camaraderie. But, you know, just, I believe, you know, it's our duty to be actively involved in the cities, and not only to be actively involved, but to pray for, and, you know, all of our elected officials, and just do what we can to, you know, be a blessing on other people.
Great, thank you.
You bet.
Councilmember Turnus.
So what do you view as the most important thing that we can be doing now in the city of Milton to benefit the next generation?
Wow, that's tough. You know, I, I just, I'm so, it's so, so difficult for a young couple now, even if they're both wage earners, to afford to, and, and location, 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 right? Everybody wants to be in Milton. It's just that small community town. And, yeah, I would like to see, you know, affordability being, would be a big number one for me. And just so we could have, you know, the young families come here. And, but, you know, but on the other hand, I like the improvements that the city is going towards, you know, at least on the main roads with sidewalks and public safe walking areas for people to get out and actually meet your neighbors and know your neighbor and love your neighbor like we're supposed to.
Councilmember Mounds.
What unique qualifications, interests, or backgrounds do you bring to the city?
Just, as a young man, really enjoyed the outdoors. And I like our green spaces here in town that we do have. And, and just, for my whole life, I don't know. Like I said, I like to have that. I think I have a spirit of that volunteering thing going on, and like to participate and help. Like, anybody has a, has a problem, I don't mind going and, and just, you know, no money involved, just, I'm just going to come and help you as an individual. But for me, it's, I'm sorry, I just, that's, that's the difficult one for me. Thank you.
And I just noticed I have a question too, so. What in your view is the purpose of government at the city level?
To show the citizens that, you know, are under us that, that there's, you know, an open window to how we're governing. And if you want to come in and, and see the books or whatever, that, you know, you're doing it legit, you know? Yeah, accountability, I guess, yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Cedar.
Thank you. Milton's comprehensive plan seeks to make Milton safer for walking and biking. Other than building more sidewalks, how do you think Milton can achieve this long-term goal?
Yeah, that's, that's a tough one. I mean, it's, like I said, affordability is an issue. And, you know, just, I think we need to almost have a, to designate it to like bike lanes or whatever, for, just certain, limit it to certain roads. You can't do that citywide, I don't think, and make this an affordable town. It would just be so expensive for all the, you know, the labor of easements and setbacks and curb and gutters. And not only that, but, I mean, we already are having water issues in this, in this city. So with, you know, all the infrastructure that has to be put in in order to do that. Because, I mean, when you, when you start putting up curb and gutter, you've got to have catch basins. And then that's a lot of, you think people are complaining about having fiber put in? Wait till you put in some storm lines, because you have to dig that in. Yeah, so, I mean, that's a tough challenge. I would reach out to communities that have done that and see how, I mean, you know, why didn't we start this back in the, in the 60s? But it was an inconvenience, you know, even back then. But, I mean, they committed to sewers, right, you know? At some point, they said, you know, we've got to get rid of all those septic tanks. And, and they committed to running sewers all through the town. But, I mean, yeah, it's just, you got to bite the bullet. But who wants to bite the bullet when you see the price tag attached to it? yeah, it's just, you got to bite the bullet, but who wants to bite the bullet when you see the price tag attached to it these days?
Council member Hall.
Hi. What previous community involvement have you had within the city of Milton?
I'm, I'm sorry, say that again?
What previous community involvement have you had with the city of Milton, within the city of Milton?
Within the city of Milton? Other than the volunteering for the fire department, I mean, I just came and enjoy, like, the civic events, the Milton Days, and at Christmas time, bringing, bringing my grandchildren down, and just enjoying the, the, you know, even a pancake breakfast, I remember doing that with them as well, but, yeah, just, you know, just getting out and meeting other local people that you don't, may, may not be your neighbors, you know? Going to a public event and just, yeah, enjoying that.
Council member Whalen.
Thank you, thank you very much. I've got to, I've got to ask a question first. We're not in order with our paperwork, and I didn't hear your name. Would you please?
Bruce.
Bruce Turnus. Sorry, we, we randomly drew names, so.
Well. Want to keep these, I want to keep these in order, so that I can do it. Yes.
Yeah, he's on the bottom.
Yeah, you're first, but on the bottom.
Yes.
You know, it makes life easier if it's done the other way.
Sorry, the Psychic Friends Network has gone out of business. Otherwise, we would have them in the correct order.
This, this helps me, and your understanding in helping me helps all of us.
Yes.
On the list of questions, so forth, what priorities within our city vision plans and scheduled development within the city would you like to focus on? Now, I want to preface that a little bit. I don't know if you had the, the chance, or if you read all of that information that may be applicable to that question, but tell me what your priorities within the city's vision plan would be related to, related to the position you're vying for.
You know, I would really like to see, I don't know, to me, it's the big picture, you know, you got, you got Meridian up there, but with all of, you know, eventually, the improvements to this lower section of, of town as well. I mean, eventually, isn't, I mean, once they get done with the 167 viaducts, isn't that going to improve some of the, the property down here? And I'm not sure what the end result is, I've seen so many different proposals of what, what the state is doing down there, and I'm still not clear what the finished product is really going to be, but, I mean, I, and then, isn't the light rail going to come through here as well? And.
It's been the wish for 20 years.
Yeah, yeah, so anyway, I mean, just, for me, it's like, to utilize every inch of property that, that, for a tax base or whatever, to make improvements in, for the city. I mean, I don't know if this is going to be like a hotbed for people because of new infrastructure down here, or whatever, or, you know, I don't know when the light rail, are they going to have a stop pretty close, or, who knows? They're probably just going to bypass Milton, but, anyway, you know, but, I mean, you could, you could actually maybe create some, a little bit of a boost for the city, for the tax base, and whether that's improvements on, on Meridian or down here on 99, I am not sure, but I think it would be something to, to study and look into, and make sure that we're taking advantage of every opportunity that's available for us.
Very appreciative. I want to add something to it. That's moved four different places, and over the course of 20 years, you may be on council for 20 years and still not have it finished. The state of Washington is a little bit hard to work with. Definitive. Thank you for your answers.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And he can stay, right?
He can stay?
Okay, all right.
Who's next?
Olav Gertz. Bob, he's the second one down. Welcome. All right, you are going to be asked one question from each of the council members, and we're going to start with council member Roberts.
Thank you for your time, sir, appreciate it. So, question for you. Why do you want to be on city council?
I've lived here a long time, and I really enjoy the community, and the stuff it's given to me over the years, my family, and I want to give back.
Thank you.
Council member Turnus.
What do you view as the most important thing that we can be doing now in the city of Milton to benefit the next generation?
Supporting our schools is the best thing for long-term, and keeping our parks clean and safe, and accessible to all people.
Thank you.
Council member Mounds.
What unique qualification, interests, or background do you bring to the city?
I have a background of IT and programming, and I troubleshoot a lot of complex issues, and you have to get them right, or things shut down. I look at things objectively from different areas and how to save money, make things expedited, but also reliable, so you don't have to go back and fix them again.
I even get one for you. It's, what in your view is the purpose of government at the city level?
To support its residents and staff of the city, to maintain the roads, water, traffic, the environment, making sure construction doesn't cause problems down the hill.
All right. Council member Cedar.
Milton's comprehensive plan seeks to make Milton safer for walking and biking. Other than building more sidewalks, how do you think Milton can achieve this long-term goal?
I'm not sure on that one. Like, walking paths type thing, but that's kind of goes along with what you already said, so, yeah, I don't really have an answer to that one, sorry.
Well, I mean, that's different than sidewalks, I appreciate that.
Okay.
All good.
Council member Hall.
Hi. What previous community involvement have you had with the city of Milton?
Not a lot of volunteer work. I have been to almost every Milton Day, I think, except for one. I engage on Facebook a lot with people about community issues and people's concerns, and, you know, we discuss ways that we could fix them, maybe calm down some people's fears where they might not be informed very well, things like that. Also do other stuff, not necessarily for Milton, but I make websites and stuff, and apps for people, local businesses in Milton, and for free, and just so people can enjoy them and not have to pay for stuff that they can afford.
Council member Whalen.
Thank you. What priorities within our, within our city vision plans and scheduled development within the city would you like to focus on?
I'm not really familiar with the current plans that the city has. You know, I do watch bits and pieces of what's on the council meetings and stuff, but I don't know what's 10 years down the road. Like, you know, the reason is, why isn't 11th Avenue paved yet, you know? I, I kind of know the gist of it, that it takes time, we have more pressing things, but if I do become on the council, I would pay close attention to that and learn all of that, so that I can help make good decisions on what things need to be done.
So you may like an opportunity to, to participate in our vision planning, so that you?
Yeah, so my vision is like, improve the water, the road quality, traffic, and the parks, make sure the toys are kept clean and refreshed, like Hill Tower Parks being worked on.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
You can have a seat.
Thank you.
Next is John Poor. John Poor. Mr. Poor, welcome.
Thank you.
Each, each council member is going to ask you a question, and starting with council member Roberts.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Poor. Quick question for you. Why do you want to be on city council?
Yeah, so I've lived in Milton since 2018, and then part of that, I lived in Edgewood for eight years. I'm a father of two, going on three, and I'm a husband, and I'm Christian, and I'd like to help preserve our community. It's a beautiful community. I love how it's got the small-town charm, but you're kind of in the middle, sorry, in the middle of everything, and my kids are very important to me, as I'm sure all of ours are, and I just want to make the best future I can for them, and contribute to our community, and I feel that my education and experience could, could be valuable to the city council.
Thank you.
Council member Turnus.
What do you view as the most important thing that we can be doing now in the city of Milton to benefit the next generation?
I think that being good stewards of our city would, would be really helpful. I think promoting safety is a very big issue for us. I know we just had a terrible issue where the lady died and was stabbed, and then, in previous years, we had the issue at Surprise Lake Apartments, but those don't really define our community. Our community is, is a lot safer than I think people might realize, and I think that if city council and our police department can kind of partner, as well as other areas of our community, we could look at things that we could make a little bit safer, and we could also try to promote programs that would enrich our families and promote better futures for our kids, and try and help people who maybe have had issues in the past to try and do better and re-acclimate in society. And my experience as a probation officer for five years would help with that. I also went to University of Washington Tacoma, got a BA in criminal justice, but it's within a social justice program, and so I'm familiar with kind of the, having a therapeutic approach to crime, while also having done it and realizing that, you know, you don't want to be soft on crime, but you want to also try and go on a case-by-case basis with people, and try and approach them where they're at, and try and help them however you can, whether it's with substance abuse, mental health issues, employment, education, and getting a roof over their head. A lot of times, when you, when you can help people make those reasons not to commit crime, then it, it helps, helps them not go that direction.
Thank you.
Council member Mounds.
Thank you, so my question is a little bit redundant, so you might have a chance to expand on your answer, but what unique qualifications, interests, or background do you bring to the city?
Yeah, I think that's a good question. I also, prior to being a probation officer, while I was at UW Tacoma, I was director of student technology, and so what I did is I, I was chair of a funding committee, and I had to populate the committee, recruit people, try and have, have, have them be approved to the positions, and then, basically, the position is a facilitator for all of the students, they pay, part of their tuition goes to student technology, and all of that goes into a big pool, and then, all the students can do what's called requests for proposals. I'm sure you guys are all very familiar with that, even better than I am. But basically, we go through a process of finding out what, what they're looking to do, and we go through all the, you know, we, we do Robert's rules, although not necessarily as familiar, some of you guys with, with that, it was a little more informal, but we went through the procedural things to approve those things. So one of the things that we're really proud of is the students didn't have a way to print their assignments on campus, and so we bought printers for all the buildings, so that they could print their assignments if they didn't have the ability to do that at home, or if they, you know, just needed the convenience. Another thing was, we brought kind of 3D printing to the, the campus and the library, so all the students could use that. And we tried to, being inclusive in a lot of things, but we also wanted to be good stewards of the money, and realize that it's, it's every student's fees that are, are in this, and so we want to be responsible with the money, and not just approve everything.
All right, and for me, what is, what in your view is the purpose of government at the city level?
I think that it's to try and enrich your community as much as possible. You want to make things as safe as you can, you want to make resources for your citizens to be as successful as possible in society. You want to try and provide a voice for people, maybe that don't have a voice, and, and maybe can't do it in other ways, and I think it's also to listen to the community and see what's going on. I think city council, part of their responsibility is just being kind of eyes and ears of the community, and coming together and trying to use that experience that they have, and also gather their own research, and talk to their community members, and see what the main concerns are in the community, and try to help push those issues forward in a responsible way, and, and gather the information, and then deliberate and, and make the best decisions possible.
Thanks. Council member Cedar.
Milton's comprehensive plan seeks to make Milton safer for walking and biking. Other than building more sidewalks, how do you think Milton can achieve this long-term goal?
That's a good question. I think for biking, we could probably do bike lanes in areas where they may not be, especially in the smaller streets. That could be pretty expensive, though, so we could also look at other options. I think probably promoting education and statistics on when people jaywalk, or when they, you know, aren't, aren't using the crosswalks, how much more likely they are to have a big accident, or be killed, or injured. Educating our citizens, maybe doing a mailer, or at least putting something on, on the city hall website, just to try and help promote education and awareness of issues like that. You know, I, myself, I've seen people jaywalking, and I think they don't mean to do anything bad with it, but they put themselves at a big risk, as well as the drivers. You know, somebody swerves and hits somebody else, and now you got a big issue, so I think also improving visibility would be helpful for the drivers and the pedestrians. And so, putting, putting that education out, maybe on the website or mailers, could also help the drivers too. And so, we want to, as drivers, make the pedestrians as safe as possible, but it's a kind of a team effort.
Council member Hall.
Hey. What previous community involvement have you had with the city of Milton?
Thank you. So currently, I go, my, my family goes to Faith Family Church, and I volunteer there. I'm doing children's ministry, and I'm on the, the, kind of the audio/video support team. As far as community service, prior to that, I had gotten an award while I was working with the Department of Corrections for, this is like an annual agency award. the Department of Corrections for, this is like an annual agency award, and it was is a service award for basically trying to help serve my fellow officers, but also our incarcerated individuals that we're working with. So a lot of that was trying to facilitate them going to treatment, to make sure that they're going to make it there, and to be as supportive of as I can, people, because in law enforcement, it can be kind of a grind sometimes. And so trying to just encourage each other to try to treat these people in a way as if we haven't met them before, and that they're like not incarcerated people. So just trying to give them a clean slate, basically. And by doing that, you don't get as jaded. So the reason I bring that up is just because I know it can be really hard in the public service sector. I think it's important to try and keep yourself refreshed and do the best you can to try and remember that you're a servant of the community, and promote that kind of attitude and environment.
Thank you.
Councilmember Whalen.
Thank you. And thank you for applying. What priorities within our city's vision plans and scheduled development within the city would you like to focus on?
Thank you. I think my main thing would be trying to help promote safety wherever possible. That would be the biggest one for my kids, trying to promote family values. I think it'd be cool if we maybe either go bigger with some of our community events to try and promote everybody coming together, or maybe have them a little more frequently, maybe having some resources for people, like small businesses and stuff like that. I have a handyman business that I do on the side. My wife's a nurse, so she's the breadwinner, and we're planning on homeschooling our kids. And so just more resources for education. I know we have the library. I think we do a really good job of trying to give people as much resources as we can already, but maybe looking at things that we haven't already implemented and different opportunities.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You can have a seat.
Thank you, guys, for your time.
Barbara Buck is next. No, you can stay here.
Welcome. Hello.
Each council member is going to ask you a question.
Okay, are we going right to left, or left to right?
We're going to start with Councilmember Roberts.
Hello, Ms. Buck. Thank you for your time. Why would you like to be a council member?
Why would I like to be a council member? So growing up in Milton, I've pretty much, you know, grown up here my whole life. I did move away for a few years, you know, with my career. And when I came back, I chose to live in Milton. So as many of you may know, I did run for mayor a few years back. And it was just a really enlightening experience for me. I got to know kind of a lot about the ins and outs, and, you know, I didn't get elected. So I did pivot with my career and kind of took on some new things in my career and spent some time, you know, traveling the country a lot, just in different regions of the country, and really got to know some small towns out there across the country. But coming back, it's like, dang, I really think that Milton has a great opportunity here, and I want to lean in, and I want to be a part of the future growth of Milton. But I also want to really be a part of making sure that we don't lose that small-town feel, because I think that's what draws many people to Milton, but it keeps many people in Milton.
Thank you.
Councilmember Turnus.
What do you view as the most important thing that we can be doing now in the city of Milton to benefit the next generation?
Well, I think one of the, one of the main things that I think that we can do to benefit, you know, the future of Milton and the next generations, is to really look hard at some of our policies and our codes that would protect the nuances and the charm of Milton. I think that that's a really important task that I think the whole of Milton needs to start looking at. I don't want us to get sucked up by the federal ways of the world, the pialips of the world, Tacomas of the world, Fife. I think that that would be one of the things that I would really want to put a focus on.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mouts.
Thank you. What unique qualifications, interests, or backgrounds do you bring to the city?
Oh, my goodness. So we'll take that in a few different parts here. So will you read the question for me one more time? I'm going to take a couple notes.
What unique qualifications, interests, or background do you bring to the city?
So we'll start with qualifications. So I feel like I could share lots of insight from just what I've done my whole career. I have a great background in retail, you know, which entails budgeting, logistics, project planning, problem-solving. It's a lot of different things that I've done in my career, and I feel like that I could be a really good, like, voice of reason, or a different perspective to many, whether it's a problem, or it's an idea, or it's a way to move forward with any sort of project. So that's a qualification answer for you. Interests? I have a lot of great interest in community outreach. I spent a lot of time in my career within the organizations I've worked for, being in associate resource groups, you know, specifically a co-chaired the ESG resource group for the company of Albertsons. And prior to that, I, when I was with Kroger, I was with their Women's Excellence Resource Group. So, and I always held like a chair position. And when I would fall back, I would just be a member at large. So I think that with that experience, it could bring some, you know, abilities to work with the community. And then background, again, back to just what I've done in my whole career in retail. I bring a lot of experience, like I said, in the budgeting process, problem-solving, logistics, and just simply running projects. So. Thank you.
And the one for me is, what is, what in your view is the purpose of government at the city level?
What is my view of purpose?
What is, what in your view is the purpose of government at the city level?
So my view of government at the city level is really specifically to serve the community in which you've been elected.
Okay. Councilmember Cedar.
Milton's comprehensive plan seeks to make Milton safer for walking and biking. Other than building more sidewalks, how do you think Milton can achieve this long-term goal?
Will you repeat the question, the first part of the question?
Absolutely. Milton's comprehensive plan seeks to make Milton safer for walking and biking. Other than building more sidewalks, how do you think Milton can achieve this long-term goal?
So I think if Milton could actually put a, which they, I'm not saying there's no comprehensive plan here for Milton when it comes to cut-through traffic, but I think that we have an opportunity to take a look at what's happening to us when it comes to cut-through traffic, which I can speak to where I live, and I get blasted by people just flooring it going down my street, right? So I feel like there could be better traffic, you know, patrols. But then when it comes to walking, biking, which I am a huge supporter of, I think we could look at on some of our main roads through the city, are we looking at bike lanes? You know, I know sidewalks are quite costly, but could we, you know, make sure that we have really prominent speed limit signs, or lighted speed limit signs, so that we can actually get people to slow down? Because that is a great concern for me. I see it all the time where I live. I mean, I can stand from my house and see the corner of Taylor and 15th. One week, two summers ago, I witnessed two accidents in the same week, right? And people cross that street all the time, you know? So right there, maybe a traffic circle. You know, I know that over on, I believe it's Emerald, there's a test going on with the little speed bumps. Why don't we have those in more locations across city, of the city? You know, because I think that this is such a great community for walking and biking, that any sort of those kind of testing, tests and trials would be.
Councilmember Hall.
Hi. What previous community involvement have you had within the city of Milton?
So I have not, in the last several years, been a part of really any community involvement in the city of Milton. I've, and like I stated with my career, I've spent a lot of time traveling and working within the organizations that I work for, working in their associate resource groups, doing community outreach, but not specifically in Milton.
Councilmember Whalen.
Thank you. And thank you for being here. What priorities within our city vision plans and scheduled development within the city would you like to focus on?
Repeat the question, please, Buck.
I'm sorry?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Sure. What priorities within our city's vision plans and scheduled development within the city would you like to focus on?
The scheduled development plan.
Pardon?
The scheduled development plan. I think that would be the place that I'd like to focus and really understand what that plan looks like, and understand how it's being driven, what the projects involved in that scheduled development plan are, and who owns those projects within that plan.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You can have a seat.
Thank you.
Next is Adam Ibanez. Mr. Ibanez.
Hello.
Welcome.
Yes.
Could you pronounce your last name for me?
Ibanez.
Ibanez, okay.
Yes.
They didn't put the "ñ" on that.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. We're gonna, each council member is going to ask you one question. We're going to start with Councilmember Roberts.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Ibanez. A question for you. Why would you like to be a city council member?
Well, counsel, I want to get to know my neighbors better and be more involved in our community here. Did everybody get a copy of my cover letter and resume? I mean, as I outlined there, we moved to Milton roughly two and a half years ago, and we just love it here. And I want to see the city continue to grow in a way that is beneficial to the rest of our community. And I want to be part of that discussion and part of the input. I also want to be a good role model for my children and all of their friends. I just kind of want to make participating in our democracy, even at the city level, more of a fun thing that young people can be involved in.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Turnus.
What do you view as the most important thing that we can be doing now in the city of Milton to benefit the next generation?
Well, counsel, my, as a father of four, very young children, two of them, I think we need to encourage more reading and more exercise. I know that my kids have grown adept in a culture of screens. And we need to grow with the technology in a way that is going to still instill the value of reading, of books, and of exercise. Otherwise, we're going to find ourselves in a society of children that remain children, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Mouts.
What unique qualifications, interests, or backgrounds do you bring with you to the city?
So I have lived in multiple places of Washington, and I've lived in multiple states. So I bring that perspective to the council of places that aren't functioning necessarily quite as well as our city has, can be improved on. Also, as a business operator and small business owner, I bring the advantage of knowing how to read budgets. I'd say that.
All right. You get one for me, too. What in your view is the purpose of government at the city level?
So at the city level, I believe making sure that our stoplights, stop signs are working right, that we have concrete on the sidewalks that isn't cracked, that we don't have potholes, that we have public safety in general. That would be the priority of the government at the city level.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Cedar.
Milton's comprehensive plan seeks to make Milton safer for walking and biking. Other than building more sidewalks, how do you think Milton can achieve this long-term goal?
So counsel, I I have an idea that maybe we can set aside some funds for our citizens of Milton to purchase bicycles, maybe walking clubs and biking clubs as well.
Councilmember Hall.
What previous community involvement have you had within the city of Milton?
So when I first came here, I was assigned to work at Safeway down the road in Milton, and I was the third in charge of that store. And I oversaw it during the period of its construction for a remodel and grand reopening. So I was there at the ribbon-cutting. I oversaw it shift management teams two times. I remained part of it. So I, that was the extent of my main service to the community is providing food for our community there in that regard, keeping the store well-stocked and clean. But also, my children being students at Surprise Lake Middle School and at Discovery Primary School, we volunteer in the Pi, PTA.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Whalen.
Thank you, and thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you.
What priorities within our city vision plans and scheduled development within the city would you like to focus on?
Priorities. Can you repeat one of that last bit there? Councilman Whalen?
I'm sorry?
Sorry, yeah.
Say it again.
What priorities within our city's vision plans Within our city's vision plans and scheduled development within the city would you like to focus on?
Oh, definitely the more sidewalks.
Good response, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. You can have a seat.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
We have one more person. Rachel Shin. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name's Rachel Shin.
Hold on a second. Each council member is gonna ask you a question.
Okay.
And we're gonna start with Councilmember Roberts.
Thank you, Ms. Shin. A quick question for you. Why would you like to be on city council?
I would like to be on city council for many reasons. I'm a long-term resident here. I've lived here 30 years. I moved here from Oregon with my three young boys. I'd always lived in a small town, and when my husband got transferred up here to Seattle, I envisioned myself living in a city, and I said, can't do that. So, this was back before the internet. I went from school district to school district and asked for their performance reports. And then, from there, I looked at communities, and I came across, Milton had the best school scores. Their office, the office manager would just welcome me and told me a lot about the community. I've been involved in volunteering at every, every level of the schools. I worked in Surprise Lake Middle School for 18 years as attendance secretary, and then a few more as the office manager. And I just, my heart is into this community. I've always, I retired eight years ago, and I've been coming to the meetings recently, and I just, the world is changing, Milton's growing, and I think together, all of us have the ability to protect that hometown feel and, and just thoughtful direction.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Trenas.
What do you view is, as the most important thing that we can be doing now in the city of Milton to benefit the next generation?
I think, I think there are many parts to that. Safety is a big one. And also, planning how our community's gonna grow, how it's going to the infrastructure. And the, for me, one of the, the very important things are sidewalks and the trail. And I moved here long before the trail was paved. And my boys used to ride their horse down to Surprise Lake on the side of the road. But, you know, this community has amazing community members in it. And I think together, we can all, you know, help, just make Milton be the best it can be, but, you know, just hold on to that history that we have. And that's, that's the beauty of Milton. We have so many people of the generation that have been here for years that hold that knowledge. That doesn't happen very often in a community. And so, you know, directly to the most important thing, I think it dovetails with things for, opportunities for seniors, providing walking paths, just, it's many, many different working parts.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mounds.
Thank you. What unique qualifications, interests, and backgrounds do you bring to the city?
So, my background that I bring is, we moved here in '95. Prior to that, I was living in the Dows, Oregon, where I was a school board member at a private school there. And we managed the budget, the fundraisers, all of that. And then, we got moved here, and I, the first thing I got involved in was my kids were doing a summer theater camp here. And I walked in with the kids, and, you know, a lot of people, they're, they're working, they're busy, they're dropping their kids off and things, and I looked at these kids that were on the stage, and so many of them, they didn't have access to costumes. They were wearing their street clothes. And then, there were a handful whose parents, you know, could afford it and rented costumes. And I thought, no, that's not okay. Every single one of these kids need to have that. So, I started making costumes, donating them every year to the school district. I have viewed my, you know, how I live my life as, it's not just about my kids, it's about everybody's kids and our future generations and what it's going to look like. And then, from there, I started, when my youngest was in school, I started working at Surprise Lake Middle School, and I was there for almost 20 years. And I was the attendance secretary. I could probably tell you every kid's name over the last 30 years. But I, and then the last few years, I worked as the office manager, and I was the ASB secretary, which the ASB kids, the student body kids, they raise money, and they have to manage that money. And I attended several, over the years, Oregon-sponsored workshops that I was required to go to, to, for record-keeping and for what's appropriate to, even how, even tonight, even how meetings are ran. And these kids did an amazing job. But this was also back in the day before, you know, we had computers, but most of, you know. So, in the, in the school room, they sent me a picture before they took Surprise Lake down. There were binders from '95 to, you know, 2010 of every meeting, the minutes, the budget, where the money was spent, how it was spent. So, I have a lot of experience in schools, but I also have a lot of experience. I've been on many, many boards and collaborating with other staff members or other community members, because I feel like we all can bring something different to the table. And that's what I worked with the kids at the school, was trying to, you know, people would say, you work at a middle school? Are you crazy? And it's like, to, to help these young minds kind of problem-solve. And I, I do have good problem-solving skills, but I never approach anything as, it's just me, how do I figure this out? I look at it from different perspectives, and so, that's, that's my background.
Thanks, and you get one from me. What, in your view, is the purpose of government at the city level?
Purpose of government at?
At the city level.
At the city level. I believe it is to be accountable and to, not necessarily like, we have to make laws. We have, we're here to get the information, guide the city, what, make the hard decisions, but not only making the decisions, like say, okay, we want this building. Well, how is that going to affect our city long-term down the road? I've seen this with the schools, because by the time we had Columbia built, we'd already over, outgrew it, because we didn't anticipate the amount of people coming in. And, and Milton became a very sought-after community. So, and I also believe the, the job of the city government would be to transparency and to also, I think, in my opinion, I think there could be more community involvement and, and just, but I, I really feel like you guys are steering the ship, but we're all in it together. And it's kind of like Bob said to me, when, Mr. Whelan said to me one time, when we couldn't hear anything, and I'm back there, and there's only two of us, and I was kind of timid, you know? And he spoke up, and later I came up, and I thanked him, and he said, you're a citizen. Our job is to be there for you. If you can't hear, you need to tell us, you know? And that's just on a very small level. But, yeah, I think just a cohesive structure that's gonna be solid, have integrity, and be transparent.
Thank you. Councilmember Cedar.
Milton's comprehensive plan seeks to make Milton safer for walking and biking. Other than building more sidewalks, how do you think Milton can achieve this long-term goal?
Well, I will tell you this. There's a lot of ways we could do that. And I ran into one just the other day. I told Chief Hernandez, you look on social media, EMF Cooler, everybody's complaining about these kids on scooters. And I do see that that's getting a little bit less. But so many people just look at it as not the big picture of how they can help, but, oh, that's that kid. Where's his parent? Well, I was stepping out of the UPS store, which, by the way, that's another new asset to our community. They love being there, they're so kind. And, and for us to have a business like that is, is really a good thing. But I was stepping out, a woman opened the door. She was, I was holding it for her, she started to open it, and a kid right between us, with this much room, came whizzing by on a scooter. I mean, literally, and so she said, oh, that's happened to me before. And she went aside, and I walked out, and I just kind of stood there for a minute before getting into my truck, and I saw the kid turn around. Well, he was probably about 12 or 13, and he was flying. And he started moving slowly, and I thought, he's scared. And so, I went up to him. He's not my child, but I said, you know, I just want to check and make sure you're okay. And first off, I'd like to thank you for wearing your helmet, because he was wearing a helmet, and he was like, oh, okay. And then, we talked about, you know, when you're on sidewalks, maybe, you know, turn off the motor, or, you know, because you don't know how these doors are gonna open. So, I think all of us working, and, and working with the schools with how to handle some of these things. But I, just goes back to when I thought of what Chief Hernandez says, you see something, you say something. I, you know, even, we did, in Oregon, we did a safety fair for kids riding bikes. We provided the helmets. They had them fitted, you know? We kind of gave them, and, and they loved kind of messing around with Crash Dummy, but we gave them some things of, what would happen if you weren't wearing your helmet? So, I think community awareness, the, yeah, the sidewalks, but also, just people watching out for each other. I think these traffic cameras are really good. It's making people aware, but there's a lot more that we could do. And just like with coming to the meeting about 23rd Street, I'd never really thought of, of that, because it didn't particularly pertain to me, because I don't live there. But so, that's where I feel like, I probably am not aware of, you know, many things that are safety issues, but I think if there's more community involvement, and that comes on both sides.
Councilmember Hall.
I know you touched on this, but I have to ask. What previous community involvement have you had within the city of Milton?
In what, in the city of Milton?
The city.
So, I, I did all the, well, for 20 years, made the costumes for the kids going through the play. I've been kind of the go-to person that if they need something and they're in a pickle, they call if it has anything to do with costumes. So, for example, I was working full-time at the school, and they, and at that year, the Five High School had done their, they were in the daffodil parade. They'd done their float, and they'd done an amazing job. And they won, and they were gonna go to the next level. Well, there was a lady that was supposed to be making the costumes, and these girls were kind of timid about checking. Well, long story short, she was in over her head. So, there were no outfits for those girls for that next competition. So, they called me, and they all knew me from the middle school. I said, okay, let's troubleshoot this. Here it is Friday, we've got Saturday. Let's call, and this was again before social media and cell phone, let's call everybody and see who has prom dresses that maybe we can put you together that way. Then, you get to the next point, I'll figure out the dresses. So, they won that competition, and they won the final competition at the end. And I had, I went and got the pile of fabric, and I just kept putting them together. So, a lot of times, it's not a structured committee as such, but, and like, there was a little boy, and he's just amazing now, because I see him on the FME, I've been involved with FME, but see him on the FME field. And his mom and dad, when he was only four, he had to have some sort of surgery where he had his kidneys operated on and had a neck bag, and the bag was hanging down. And she really wanted him to get back to school. And this little boy's like, I can't, Mom, I can't. Well, a good friend of hers knew me and knew I still did, and she says, Rachel, there's a situation here. I said, okay, I got it. So, I went down and got superhero fabric, and made the little bag, made pants for him. They were sending me pictures, you know? So, it's more kind of, I see a need, that's where we go and do it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Whelan.
Oh, thank you. What priorities within our city's vision plans and scheduled development within the city would you like to focus on?
You know, I feel like you have a great team here, and I know there's, I, you know, learning more about, if we're talking infrastructure and things, I'd really have to study up on that. But as far as what we can do for our seniors or our kids, or even young parents, or like, like, I would love to see maybe a town hall every now and then where, and I know this would mean extra time on your part, but where an hour before, or a half hour before the meeting, we provide refreshments, and we personally get out there, invite people to come. And last, last spring, I did, my neighbor and I did Easter egg hunt for all the kids in the neighborhood. And there's lots of different things. I think community involvement and then sharing that knowledge of what's going on. And, you know, I think, and I think all that's gonna happen from that is more and more people with talents coming forward and working together.
All right, thank you so much. Now, we are, per RCW 42.30.1101H, we are adjourning to executive session to evaluate the qualifications of a candidate for appointment to elective office. How long should we say we're gonna go?
At least.
15 minutes. We'll, we'll be back. If we need more time, I'll be back to extend that. So, and once we come back, we will, there will be action to choose. Oh, oh, we need to extend the meeting. Can I get a motion to extend the meeting for an additional?
Well, let's wait till.
Should we? Okay. All right. All right.
We're still waiting for Terry. And, oh, here's Bob.
Okay, we're back from executive session. And since it's past nine, I need a motion to extend our regular meeting. Councilmember Cedar.
I'm moved to extend tonight's session by 20 minutes.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Yes, okay. Thank you, Bob. All right. Okay, so before we go to the nominations, I just wanted to thank everyone who has applied. This is, I've been, I've been through six of these, either on your side or on this side. And the most people in the last, the last six times that this has happened, the most people that have applied has been three. So this is double what is typically normal. So thank you to everyone that applied. And obviously, with, with this type of a procedure, one person is going to be happy and five are going to be disappointed. So I just wanted to offer to the people that, that don't, don't win the, win the vote, to please consider volunteering on some of the boards that we have vacancies on. Right now, we have vacancies on the park board, and we also have a couple vacancies on the planning commission. So please do consider joining those. So with that, I will take nominations for, for the council candidate. Councilmember Hall.
I'd like to nominate John Poor for council position?
Five.
Five.
Thank you. Any, any further nominations?
I move to nominate Bruce Turnus to council position number five.
Any further? Councilmember Cedar.
I move to appoint Adam Abanias to fill the council position number five to begin immediately with the expiration, the general election of November 2027.
Okay. Any further nominations? All right. We'll, we'll start with, with John Poor. Councilmember Hall, would you like to make the motion?
Vote.
No?
I'll vote first.
Vote, vote first? Okay. All right. So all in favor of appointing John Poor to fill the vacancy in council position five?
I'd ask for a roll call vote on this, one by one.
Okay. So we'll have a roll call vote.
Agreed, John Poor.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Wayland, how do you vote?
I'm sorry?
How do you vote?
I agree with...
We're still waiting for Terry and, oh, here's Bob.
Okay, we're back from executive session and since it's past nine, I need a motion to extend our regular meeting. Councilmember Cedar.
I'm moved to extend tonight's session by 20 minutes.
Second.
It's been moved in second and all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Yes, okay. Thank you, Bob. All right, okay, so before we go to the nominations, I just wanted to thank everyone who has applied. This is, I've been, I've been through six of these either on your side or on this side and the most people in the last, the last six times that this has happened, the most people that have applied has been three. So this is double what is typically normal. So thank you to everyone that applied and obviously with, with this type of a procedure, one person is going to be happy and five are going to be disappointed. So I just wanted to offer to the people that, that don't, don't win the, win the vote, to please consider volunteering on some of the boards that we have vacancies on. Right now, we have vacancies on the park board and we also have a couple vacancies on the planning commission. So please do consider joining those. So with that, I will take nominations for, for the council candidate. Councilmember Hall.
I'd like to nominate John Poor for council position?
Five.
Five.
Thank you. Any, any further nominations?
I move to nominate Bruce Turnus to council position number five.
Any further? Councilmember Cedar.
I moved to appoint Adam Abagnas to fill the council position number five to begin immediately with the expiration, the general election of November 2027.
Okay. Any further nominations? All right, we'll, we'll start with, with John Poor. Councilmember Hall, would you like to make the motion? No?
I'll vote first.
Vote, vote first? Okay. All right. So all in favor of appointing John Poor to fill the vacancy in council position five?
I'd ask for a roll call vote on this, one by one.
Okay. So we'll have a roll call vote.
Agreed, John Poor.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Wayland, how do you vote?
I'm sorry?
How do you vote?
I agree with the statement for John Poor to be
Okay.
the next council member position number five.
All right, yes, okay. Councilmember Hall.
John Poor.
Councilmember Cedar.
This is to the motion for John Poor.
Yes.
My vote is no.
Councilmember Mouse?
Yes.
Councilmember Turnus?
My vote's no.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Okay. There being a majority, that means that John Poor is our new council member for position number five. Congratulations, sir.
You're signing the papers.
Mr. Poor, were you coming?
He needed a picture. You got one?
You can now take your seat. All right, well, welcome. Okay, we're now moving to council reports and we'll start with councilmember Hall this time.
Me?
Yes.
Oh, shoot. Thank you, everybody, for coming and please get on a committee. If you guys have any questions or any ideas, please come to council meetings. I think it's really important. It helps us lead the city and we can't do it without you.
Councilmember Poor.
Do you mind if I? I just wanted to say it was an honor interviewing with all you guys and to the best of my ability, I'll honor the issues that we talked about and that you guys brought forward in, in your interviews. And thank you, everybody, for your time.
Councilmember Cedar.
I just want to echo, yeah, I really appreciate all the thoughtful applicants and answers. This is a pleasure. It's great to see. That, you know, I appreciate the issues that have been brought forth by citizens lately too, including the fiber optic issue, which I think is a great lesson learned for the city. You know, I've had my own personal discussions with them, I would say discussions, and the staff has been quick to respond. So I also want to praise the staff in staying on top of things. And I would also like to praise the police who have been just an absolute beacon of light in recent weeks and months, you know, waving to people, being a presence in the community. It's been an absolute joy to see them out. So that's, Milton's doing great and it's great to see.
Thanks. Councilmember Mouse.
I want to echo what's already been said about the turnout for this vacant position and thank you all for applying and for your participation in the community. It's great. And I hope at the next meeting to have a report from a committee meeting that I'm attending tomorrow night. So nothing yet, but stay tuned.
Councilmember Turnus.
Yes, I also would like to just thank everybody coming out here tonight. We heard some great candidates. We heard some great information that we're filing in the back of our heads, just some of your thoughts and ideas as well. I also would like to comment on the fiber optic. I appreciate Mrs. Wayland coming forward. We actually had a situation on our personal property, which they have left it in, not the issue, the state that it was when it was there. And we have just, we've talked to people on the phone and, and they said, oh, we're going to get to it, but they haven't got to it. So just taking note of the fact that we need to be more proactive in when we're, we are getting these people involved. I actually was walking down Milton Way and they had one of their manhole covers that was totally open. They had their fiber optic bags sitting right there. There was no cones set up. There was nobody there. And I was just like, what is going on? So obviously, our safety is at risk by these companies coming in and not being up to standards. My husband said that we should actually have hired Milton city worker to follow them around and make sure that they were maintaining the rules that we should have been enforcing. But thank you for that.
Councilmember Roberts.
I'd like just to reiterate the other councilmember sentiment. Thank you all for applying. It's good to see so much turnout as Mayor White was indicating. I do have some lengthy reports I want to discuss, so please bear with me. I know it's kind of late in the evening here. So a follow-up from the point in time homeless count for Pierce County, which happened last week. So I volunteered down there last week at the City of Fife with other volunteers, city staff, and the Pierce County Health Department, and also with an organization called Nine Lines, which helps homeless veterans. So we were able to match up many people with needed services such as job training, affordable housing resources, medical services, et cetera. The Fife Community Center also distributed quite a bit of clothing, shoes, backpacks with toiletries, and other useful items. And it was encouraging to see all the programs that the City of Fife had in place. So the data for the census should be available by April at the PierceCountyWA.gov website. Another reminder, unrelated topic. So we have a vote coming up for the five public schools educational program and observation levy on the 10th. So do not forget to vote. Also, I would like to add an agenda item for the upcoming study session or regular council meeting. So I've been approached by some members in our community voicing their concerns about what policies or practices our Milton law enforcement adheres to if federal agents come to our community and are observed having unlawful exchanges with the residents. So a discussion needs to be had about how Milton can reassure the community and public safety as a top concern and that our force adheres to the Keep Washington Working Act, the KKW Act, which came into effect on May of 2019. Chief Hernandez already expressed, expressed to me that the force does adhere to the KKW, or excuse me, KWW Act, but this information should be reiterated to the public. Other surrounding cities already have made public decrees, either by their city website, social media, or public commenting. Cities have expressed this soon after Governor Ferguson and AG Nick Brown have urged cities to be unified in efforts to ease public concern. A candid conversation needs to be had with Chief Hernandez, Mayor White, and rest of city council, and also the public. And that's it. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Wayland.
Well, I've got a few things just to say. I appreciate everybody who has come and applied for the council position. It is not, I think it's the first time I've ever seen so many people willing to dedicate time in their lives to the, for sitting in this position. And everybody who has applied, it's not an easy thing to take one person and not everybody. It would be great to have seven more council members, but we'd probably be sitting here until midnight. But thank you all for applying. Thank you for showing your dedication to the City of Milton. Thank you for sitting through this whole thing. We suffer a little bit here trying to make the right decision. And I think we, I wish I had more seats on the council, if that's all I can say. Thank you very much for applying. And that's all.
All right. And I'll just reiterate again, thank you very much for, for applying and thank you for coming and being part of the process. Right. Well, I'll say it again later, but director reports.
Planning manager Stahlnecker.
Just to say, as has been mentioned, we have some committee openings. So if anyone wants to know more about the planning commission, I'd be happy to talk with you.
Public Works Director Madden.
I just wanted to reassure council that we have been working with Easy Fiber. Their West Coast CEO of Development was forwarded, the email from Mrs. Wayland was forwarded to them tonight. And I'm fully anticipating a conversation with them in the morning. Also, we, the flooding issue that occurred during that FEMA event, the atmospheric river, we're also continuing to research that and scope it for potential improvements moving into 2026. So that is a very seasonal sensitive job. So June is when we're scoping those improvements. Thank you.
Thanks. Interim Finance Director Robek?
No additional.
Okay. And Assistant Chief Champagne? Okay. And you already heard mine. So seeing as the, all agenda items have been dealt with, I hereby adjourn the meeting.